The Howard's Planning Board, I'm told that the clock is on Central Standard Time, I guess. First thing first, recording and typing notification, as required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. And anybody intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. So just tell us that, that would be fine. And, and, second of all, we have a quorum tonight, and interestingly enough, I think from a, from a technical point of view, Mr. Harris is a full member of the Planning Board, and has been for quite a while, but he'll now officially resume his seat as a full member of the Planning Board. You, have you have a question? Huh?
He gets sworn in. Is he sworn in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Solve that problem.
I can pass the test.
Okay, and the first meeting is a hearing for PB 2017-8, Town of Howard's Selectmen. And since I was on the committee, I will recuse myself, and Jim will take over and hear this one.
Okay.
Listen, enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing for PB 2017-18, Town of Harwood's Selectmen. Owner, care of Robert Caffarelli, Town Engineer, John Riordan, Harbor Master. Applicant seeks approval of site plan review and use special permit for 20-plus parking spaces with waivers for the properties known as Sakwataut Harbor. The land side project is located at 715 and 731 Route 28, MAP 15. Parcels T3 and H4 respectively, in the C-V and R-L districts. The petitioner's land side redevelopment project plan establishes new parking stalls and reconfiguration of existing parking stalls. The application is for two municipal buildings, one being 2,838 square feet and the other being 2,477 square feet. A seasonal snack shack of approximately 500 square feet. Four commercial ticketing sheds, common and green spaces with artisan shacks, and accessible pedestrian ways and boardwalk, along with certain pertinent systems and features. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Section 325-55 and -51, as set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Do we have somebody present to speak for the applicant? John? Okay, could you just introduce yourself, you know, for the record, please? Yeah, if you want to sit at the table here and use the speaker and just introduce yourself for the, for the record.
John Rendon, Harbor Master, for the Town of Harwood.
Bob Caffarelli, Town Engineer, Town of Harwood. Also, we have present the engineer from Moran, Dan Croto, from Moran Engineering. He has to be in the Board of Health meeting at 7:00. So if there are any septic system questions, get, hit him first, yeah, before he has to leave at 7:00.
Okay, well, what we'll do then, if you could give us an overview of the total project, then we can deal with any septic questions first, after your presentation.
Yes, and also-
First from the board and then from the general public, that's here.
Okay, Tim Sawyer from the Architect is also present.
Okay, is he required at the 7:00 o'clock meeting also, or?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
What we have here-
Mr. Caffarelli, before you start.
Yes.
Mr. Jim, I'm not sure that our Chairman made it clear. He was on this committee for this and had to recuse himself. He kinda, he didn't say it quite clearly. So I want to make sure that it's on the record that he's, he's recused himself because he was on the committee and he's sitting in the audience.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Sorry, Mr. Caffarelli, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, the Sakwataut Committee, yeah. We acquired the Downey property about a year or two ago. And so what we're proposing is for the Sakwataut land side project is to develop the Downey property and make some changes to the Sakwataut, existing Sakwataut property. With the Downey property, we're proposing the, the garage, a new garage for the Harbor, Harbor Master Department, and on my last count, it's 89 parking spaces. Also, there's going to be, I don't know, I don't have the plan there, but this is the plan showing an area for a ticket, ticket sheds. So we can get them away from where they are across the street and on, you know, the restaurant next door. So there's an area there for three ticket shacks and an access via a boardwalk to the Sakwataut side. But again, we're talking 89 parking spots. The parking is, each spot is nine foot wide by 20 foot long, which complies with the Section 325-42 of the Harwood's Code. The aisles are 24 feet. So as far as I know, I've designed the parking area there to comply, to comply fully with the town code. It's 20 feet from the property line in the front. Also, I had to show for Conservation Commission and the state, because we're within the boundary of the wetland, wetland area, that it, the drainage meets the State Stormwater Management Act. These are the drainage calculations, and with post-construction, even with all the paved area and the buildings, there will be no runoff from the property. It'll all go to porous pavement, which would be on the southern edge of the property there. The middle section will be a little retention area, it'll be recessed three feet. It'll be planted, it'll be lawn seeded, but it'll be recessed, so that could take water. So I designed the drainage so there would be no, no runoff. In fact, there'll be less runoff than there is now, because there's a section of paved area and area of existing foundation, which, you know, drains towards that. So my calculations for the state show that we're actually going to have less drainage, stormwater drainage into the wetland after construction than currently. Now, as far as the Sakwataut side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a point. There's gonna be a net reduction, I believe, of nine spaces. There was gonna be a net reduction of six, but on, I don't know if this shows it, but we're proposing eight spaces along the Brack side to gain some of the parking that we're losing by putting the, we had, we had to move the Harbor Master building back because of velocity zone here. So we are, and with the snack shack, we are losing some spaces here. But we wanted to gain as much as we could on this side. And, but even with that, there's still a net reduction in parking spaces on the Sakwataut side. Over here, we're, we're moving this, the edge of this eastern parking lot, which are the state side, over to the east 10 feet to increase the green space here for the craft sheds and the artisan sheds. What we're planning now here is a gravel, a gravel area to, to the artisan sheds there, gravel with the stone dust, making it, that is ADA, accessible, stone dust on top of a T-base. So by moving this 10 feet over there, we're just reducing the length of these, not, not the amount of parking spaces, but the length of these parking spaces, which are oversized, I assume, to take boats and trailers over here. Up and down, they'll just be sized for cars. And other than that, we're really not changing this too much. We are putting a septic system, right where I'm showing here, which isn't going to change much, except for elevating this area by a foot to a foot and a half. Okay. We're, we're keeping the existing drainage. Right here, there's an underground infiltration drainage system. We're keeping that, so we're not changing the drainage here. Now, as far as the drainage here, there is a net reduction in impervious surface, meaning the pavement and the buildings, because we're having, we're increasing this green space here. We're having green space in front of the shack, and, and we have green space, an increased green space in front of the building. So overall, there is less impervious area in the Sakwataut side, so there will be less stormwater runoff. And that's, and we did do a plan showing all the, I believe you all have, defining all the zones and the areas in accordance to your zoning. There's a plethora of numbers, so I, you know, I don't want to read them all, but we do have them all there. And as far as I know, we comply with all the requirements. Now, initially, we did request, we wanted 11 spaces over on the Brack side for an additional parking. We reduced that to eight, because with the 11, we were encroaching on the 10-foot side, side yard. Now, by reducing the three spaces to eight, we comply with the 10-foot separation distance from the edge of the parking lot to the side yard. So we're not requesting any variances at this point, or ever, as far as I know. So I think we meet, we meet all the front requirements, the side yard requirements, and, and coverage requirements.
Okay, thank you. Then, as the applicant requested, I'm going to take questions first on the septic system, first from the Planning Board and then from the general public, and then we'll open it up for more general questions. Joe?
On the other side of 28, there's a little stream that comes down.
Right.
And it comes under the road and into a pipe.
Right.
Can you show me on there where that is?
Be in between this house, right here, pretty much. It's between this house and where the storage is here. There's a head wall here. There's a head wall here.
I see it at the top, yeah, yeah.
So you see the stream there?
Yeah, then it's pipe where you are now.
Pipe's right through there, down to the stream right here.
I see.
So it's right, actually, the pipe theoretically is right on the property line. I don't know if, you know, if you took a surveyor by a hundredth of a foot, if it's exact, but theoretically, it's right, exactly. The pipe is right exactly on the property line.
Thank you.
And one of the conditions of the Conservation Commission, we went to the Conservation Commission last week, and they, one of their conditions, they would like us to move to the east of the garage. We had an area for, for the cars and boats or whatever, for the Harbor Master Department. They wanted us to move that gravel, it's just a little gravel parking area. They wanted to move that, that 25 feet from, from the, the pipe. And we adjusted the plan to move it 25 feet in, in parking. So it's gonna be on the third area from the pipe to 25 feet. Because I think sometime in the future, they're planning on opening up the pipe into an open channel.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? And again, we're first, they're taking questions just on the septic system. Okay, seeing none, are there any questions on the septic system from any members of the public? And again, you will have a chance to ask any other questions at a, at a later time this evening. Yes, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Richard Gunderson. I live on Hiawatha Road in Howard's Port. Is the septic system about the same size that it is now?
No, larger.
Why?
Because it has to accommodate, well, maybe, Dan Croto. It has to accommodate the snack shack plus current loading rates for the boat. You're probably increasing the boat.
Mr. Caffarelli, could you speak into the microphone, please, so that we can?
Yeah, it, it's being sized for current loading rates for the marina, for the, the snack shack, and-
So the snack shack adds a sink and an employee toilet or something? Is, is there any seating inside there that would add to the?
Excuse me, could you come to the microphone, please, and state your name?
Dan Croto designed the septic system.
Fine, thank you.
The physical size is bigger just because Title V is in place now. The original system was designed in 1967, obviously before Title V, before the Clean Water Act. Now, even if it was the same amount of flow, it would be, I think the original question is, is the system gonna be bigger physically? Yes. Is the flow bigger? The flow bigger is, the, the design flow is approximately 1,000 gallons bigger, too, having to do with, as soon as you have any type of food service, that building, that building requires 1,000 gallons per day to be added to the septic system. So that, so basically, it's a thou, it's going from about, from approximately 3,000 gallons to approximately 4,000 gallons. Treatment-wise, we're basically, the, the improvement in treatment is enormous for each component of the system. We are using similar treatment to the adjacent restaurant, whose flow is quite a bit larger and whose, whose testing results are, are, are good. So we figured using the, one of the same components was a good idea. But I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make one point on that, there-
Yeah, do you have another question?
If I could just follow up on the question that was asked concerning the river through the pipe on the east side. If that, if there were plans to open that up, which there's nothing concrete to do that yet, would we be able to build the maintenance garage where it is right now?
Okay, I don't think the opening up of that is part of this project, or part of the application that's being considered this evening.
Okay, I was just following up on a question, okay.
Yeah, no, I think that would have to be another application. Lynda, did you have an additional question?
Chairman Rendon is gonna add something first.
I just want to, some clarification, you know, there was in the initial plan to have a septic system that was bigger than what was currently needed, looking forward as a potential for down the road having a cafe or some other establishment part of the plan, but that is no longer. So the size of the septic is the side needed, size needed for the current plan that you see in front of you.
Okay, thank you.
That is gonna be my question, thank you, thank you.
Okay, do any members of the public have any other questions with regard to the septic system? Okay, hearing none, then I'll, I'll thank you for your participation, and I'll open it up for any additional questions of the Planning Board on any other components of the application. Joe?
Mr. Harbor Master, if I heard you right, the other night at the Board of Selectmen, your initial bid is 600,000 more than was appropriated?
The last estimate that we received from the Architect came in at 3.6, and so about 600,000 more than what it was when it was 3 million.
Can you tell us if you have an alternate plan, if you never get the, if you don't get the other 600 from grants or something?
Well, a couple things. Part of that 3.6 is a 10% contingency, which is about $330,000, that's one piece. The other two pieces, we have two, two add alts that are going as part of the bid process. One is the snack shack, which is an add alternate. And the other one would be on the site plan contract paving of the Downey property. So if we, looks like we are short on funds to try to keep it within the 3 million, we would leave the Downey property and its, you know, gravel, natural, more natural state than paving. So those are two elements that we've put in place. And in addition, since then, we have made some adjustments to, to the project that, in our estimate, doesn't affect the integrity of the plan itself, such as, we've taken out of the bid installation of split rail fencing, an irrigation plan for some of the green space. We made some adjustments to the HVAC system in the Harbor Masters office. We reduced what was gonna be a boardwalk area near the artisan shacks to a T-base type stone dust walkway. All these adjustments really add up to about $150,000 in, in reduced costs. So we've, we have taken measures to try to get us closer to that, to that, to that figure. And in addition, as you probably heard, we have applied for, and we're real hopeful that we get some grant funds from different organizations.
Thank you.
Okay, other members of the Planning Board, Dave?
I have two questions. First, are you applying for a waiver for the two, on the parking, the three spaces that were lost on the west side?
No, sir, we reduced it from 11 to 8.
Okay. The, the second question I have is, I want to compliment, it's not really a question, I want to compliment the committee and the Architect for the design of your buildings. I think it's in keeping with the kind of new buildings that really fit the character of New England and the Cape, so I'll compliment you on that. I'll get to the other question.
Okay, Lynda?
This might be a Assistant Town Administrator's question, but you mentioned the, you know, it's possible it's a 3.6 million dollar bidding at this point. You've taken some things out, and you hope to get some grants to pay for some of the- The Article at Town Meeting was for, refresh my memory, please, it was for 3 million dollars. And isn't it taxation, and doesn't it have all the caveats in it? Taxation, or available funds, or acceptance of grants, et cetera? So that the amount to be spent on the project is 3 million dollars? And if we could, is it correct that if we got a grant for a half million, we'd only be charging the taxpayers 2.5? Can you refresh my memory?
Okay, could you just state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Charlene Greenhouse, I'm the Assistant Town Administrator. And actually, John is, is much more well-versed in the wording of the article. What the article did say is exactly what you just said, Mrs. Sebula. 3 million dollars from taxation, from borrowing, from any gifts or grants.
I'm not sure I understand. The initial proposition for Town Meeting was 3 million.
Yes, it was.
He says it could be 3.6, and I understand that's a very iffy number. If you got a grant for 600,000, it doesn't go on top. It comes off the 3 million.
I'm not sure that there's a real clear decision on that point, and that was a topic of discussion last night. And if you ask the Town Administrator, as he said last night, he thinks it is within regulation to be able to utilize grant money to fund an amount that, that may be in excess of 3 million. I, I know we've had projects in the past that's been done that way, so I know we're probably gonna look further into that issue, if and when those bids come in higher than the 3 million.
And I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Rendon just said what he did. Ultimately, the decision won't be at the staff level, it will be at the Board of Selectmen level, as to whether or not they want to allow for, if it does come in at 3.6 million and we do get a million dollar in grant funding, you know, whether it's gonna be offsetting the 3 million that was approved, or whether it's gonna be in addition to. So it's really, it's, it's not a-
Could be a legal question as well.
It could be a legal question as well, but it certainly isn't at the staff level answer.
I understand, I just wanted the clarification to, if, was that the way that I was remembering the article? Thank you.
Okay, David?
Is the, is the snack shack, do you have a vendor for the snack shack, or will it be operated by the town?
It will not be operated by the town. We have some interested vendors who, you know, have asked questions and are tracking the progress. And so when it gets built, we'll be putting it out for, for lease.
It will be an income producer for the town?
It will. And one of the articles that went in front of Town Meeting was authority to enter into a long-term lease up to 10 years, and that's the intent.
Thank you.
Sir.
Okay, John, when you go, when you're ready to go ahead on a lease on that, I'm assuming that would have to be publicly bid, am I correct?
It'll be a competitive public bid, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Lynda?
Another question on the, just to make sure I understand, the resource area, there's the 0 to 50, and you can't put nothing there. The 50 to 100, there are parking spaces there, and that's okay with the Conservation Commission? Is this going to be paved, or is it going to be gravelled? That, that area that goes in the, it's in the 50 to 100?
From the 50 to 100, it's going to be, well, the southern portion's gonna be a porous pavement.
Okay.
10 feet, but it, it's gonna be paved. But because of the southern portion gonna be porous, there's gonna be no runoff into, there will be no runoff even into the 50-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Hearing none, then I'll open it up for any questions or comments from any members of the public that are here this evening. Does anybody have, yes? If, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Andy Quinn, and I have the old Downey residence just to the east of the project here, just to the east of the pipeline. Ally, can you put that up?
Yeah.
Just show that property, Ally, right where her hand is. That is the back of my house, right there.
Okay.
Can, does someone, does anybody know right now, the pipe comes right behind the house where the river starts. Does anybody know what they are changing in that green space there, right on that area? In other words, will the house now see parking lot and buildings, or is all that green staying?
Okay, do you mean right here?
So just, right there?
Yeah, the wetlands are all staying, the parking lot is gonna come about, where am I?
All right, so that's basically staying the same, you're not?
Oh, yeah, we can't touch the wetlands, and we can't touch the 50-foot beyond the wetland. So all, you know, the wetlands and 50-foot beyond the wetland flagging there.
Okay, so just-
Will not be touched.
All right, great, just up to the north there where you were with that light. So where does it start where you go in deeper? Is it right there?
Yeah, yeah, we'll kinda match what's here. It'll just come in pretty much like that.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, could you please state your name again, just for the record? Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, my name is Richard Gunderson. I wanted to focus, as I have in the past in other meetings, on the snack shack or what was the restaurant and bar. First of all, I guess I need to understand, the snack shack is a fast-food place. Is your board now making a judgment on permitting that? And can I talk to that issue?
We are not permitting the operation of the food there. We are doing a special permit with regard to the site plan. So, you know, a snack shack is in allowed use, but I assume, and Ally, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Board of Health would be sort of the one that would be approving, you know, a food operation at that location?
It's just that your notice referenced Section 325-51 and 55, and they do cover permitting for takeout and fast-food restaurants, and I thought that was part of what you were doing tonight.
No, we're doing a special per, a special permit on the site plan, which includes the space and the facility for a snack shack.
Okay.
In our zone, just to clarify, in our zoning regulations, this type of use falls under a restaurant, fast-food takeout, and that's how we count parking calculations and things like that. So that's how we classified it for this. So that's how we classified it for this.
Yeah.
And it is included in the site plan special permit.
Yeah.
So it's an allowed use, but again, you know, when a, if somebody bids on it to get a lease,
they're going to have to get approval of like the board of health in order to open.
And probably be awarded by the board of selectmen.
Yeah, the lease would be awarded by the board of selectmen, that's correct, Joe.
Yeah, I'm just trying to prevent it from ever being built, that's all, and that's why I was here. Just a couple of comments, and if I can't talk about that. The notice that was published talks about, application is for two municipal buildings, and it gives the square footage. Well, actually, you know there's three, right? I mean, the snack shack is a municipal building, and it should have been three. And it's not 500 square feet, it's 550 square feet. Just seems like there's some errors here. The other thing is, it talks about ticket booths. It was my understanding, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but I thought this project involved building concrete pads on which the ticket booths would be mounted, along with utilities connecting to them. Are we also building the buildings? Is that part of it?
Could the applicants please speak to that issue?
We are not building the buildings.
Just the pads?
Correct.
Okay, then the notice was misleading in that regard, it was not clear. So could you, Mr. Acting Chairman, could you explain just when, or at what point in this process it would be appropriate to comment on the reasons why we're putting in a snack shack at a harbor when it has nothing to do with harbor operations? And the fact that it's going to be a losing proposition financially, I don't care how much revenue it produces, it's not going to pay for the debt service and things like that. So I'm getting into my argument here, but what part of the process would those comments be appropriate?
Ally, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that they would be appropriate at the time that the board of selectmen is discussing offering a lease for that type of operation.
Then it's already built.
Yes, that's right.
A building has been built. Yeah, here we're approving the actual building, but we're not approving the operation, is what I'm saying.
Right.
And that would have to be a lease by the selectmen, and then approval of the actual, whoever is going to operate it, by the board of health.
So you're not considering the fact that this is a form of government subsidized competition, being less than 30 yards from an existing restaurant service, and short distance away from an ice cream place, and not that far from Howard Center where you're going to be competing with other businesses? And we're paying for it, the taxpayers are paying for this.
Yes, but this is going to also be, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, a revenue-generating operation for the town, because lease would require certain payments to the town.
Right.
So that would be an operation that I assume the board of selectmen would want to generate sufficient revenue.
Sure. Now, as long as you raise that, John put out a memo back in February where we were still looking at a 60-seat restaurant bar, and in it he said that we would, could generate as much as $20,000 annually. That was for a 24,000-square-foot restaurant bar. We're now looking at a 550-square-foot bar, so let's assume for the moment that it's proportional. You might generate 5, 10, maybe 10,000, because it's seasonal. So what happens is, if you go out and borrow the maximum, let's say, for the building of this, which is $330,000, as John described to the selectmen last night, the debt service, 3.5%, 20 years, is $222,000 a year. I'm sorry, $22,000 a year, $22,000 a year. So if he turns around and rents it, or the town rents it, I don't care who signs the lease, it's a losing proposition, and it's subsidizing competition.
Excuse me, it is not our purpose here tonight to evaluate the economics of the plan. We are doing a site plan review with regard to, you know, how the site is going to be structured, whether it's going to be adequate, whether it's going to be a safe and operational site. The economics of the plan and what are there had been studied by a committee for, to my knowledge, at least a year and a half to two years, that it took them in order to come up with this plan.
Sure, and that's, that's true, and I just, you know, if I can say, it's been over 60 public meetings, five different briefs to the board of selectmen, to finance committee, to the capital outlay committee, town hall, our town meeting voted on it, so there's been plenty of opportunity to discuss the merits of the snack shack and the plan at various public meetings, and town meeting has approved the plan in front of you, so I think the opportunity was there.
So the harbor master's telling me they basically shut up, I guess.
No, I'm just answering your question that you posed.
No, you're doing a lot more than that. Basically, I grew up with the idea...
Excuse me, if we could keep the civil...
I will, yes. I grew up with the idea that there is never a bad question. I'm hearing slightly different...
If you have additional questions, please go ahead and ask them.
No, I think I'm through, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other members of the public have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Yes, I'd like to make a motion, well, hearing, wait, hold on for a second. What I just want to do is make an announcement that on this type of special permit, we need a positive vote of five members of the board. Mary, as an alternate, is allowed to vote on this, so we have five board members here who are eligible to vote. So all votes are going to need a completely unanimous vote of the board members that are here, present, and eligible to vote. So with that, I would like to call for a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Close the public hearing.
Are we going to hear Ally's staff report?
I read it. It's up to you, of course.
We can say...
Do you want to hear before you close the hearing or after?
Yes, okay, why don't we do that before we close the hearing?
Okay. So, in my staff report, I'm just going to go jump to the second page. So comments from other boards or committees. Health, this project went for a preliminary review on June 13, 2017. The health, the board of health looked favorably upon the project as presented, and obviously they're going back right now, so they're there. The fire department had no concerns, police department had no concerns, the application went to conservation commission on July 5, and it's my understanding that they approved it with conditions, correct? So those were all the referrals that were sent out. And my planning staff comments right under that, there are a number of things that I had sent the applicants for revisions, and most of them were done. The only thing that weren't were names, deed, and plan references of all director butters on the plan. And I just had a question, were there, are there any free standing signs proposed at all? Because if so, then it's just...
I mean, we're going to have to have signage, Ally.
Correct, yeah.
And some of it will be on the buildings themselves, and I'm guessing that there'll be some signs leading into the property, the Downey property.
Okay.
Signs for the new handicap parking.
Yeah.
Just typical signs.
And by the way, Ally, I kind of let that go by without reminding again, that even if there are signs, we have nobody to enforce the sign code.
Well, we try.
I know.
We try. We try. So, yeah, it's just how...
I'm not critical of you, it's not your job.
So, it is my recommendation that one of the conditions, if the board agrees to approve the application tonight, would be all signage shall be required to meet sign regulations, and it can be reviewed on the time that it's proposed. Moving on to additional requirements, it is my understanding that the applicant proposes to merge both 715 and 731 Route 28, which is the Downey property and the Saquitautucket. I'm not sure if it has already, if the map has already been filed to merge.
It's been completed, and it's been stamped, the town surveyor completed it. He hasn't had the chance to go to file it, but he can do it, I can send him tomorrow to file it, so it's pretty much a done deal.
Okay, it's also my recommendation that if the board agrees to approve the plan, it be put as a condition.
What is that, please?
I think I put it on there. Yes, it's my, it's the first suggested condition under a planning board vote one.
I see it, thank you.
I believe the board of health is going to require that, too.
As well, okay, that's great. I also had a question, I know that from some discussion, there is parking proposed on the existing property line potentially, I'm not sure how that, so I was on vacation last week, so I'm not sure how that ironed out. There's four, okay, I'm getting a signal from the back that there are four additional parking spaces proposed on the property line, so I would also recommend...
For the Downey property?
Up here.
Yes, it's not, it's towards a property line because we didn't have to do the 10-foot separation.
Just one, just one point. This plan and this packet still showed the 11, so...
On the left side, over the other?
On the left side.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if this was the most recent, or if this had been updated.
Yeah, so that's the most recent that we have for the Saquitautucket side, so it would also be one of my recommendations that an updated plan be submitted that shows the accurate amount of parking, that shows just the eight parking on that side, on the, yeah.
I have it right here.
Oh, you do, okay, great. Yes, please, if you could.
It's here. It's here. Which one? Number two.
Corrected those numbers, did I?
She got it. Yep.
I got you.
She says all of them.
This was 11, apparently, Mr. Chairman, now it's eight.
Okay.
It's not all 11, it's eight. Correct.
Okay, Ally, any other comments?
I just had one other one, that the height of the building should, at the time a building permit is submitted, be confirmed by the building commissioner, because we do have a bylaw that says the building heights can be larger, taller than what's required if you're in a flood zone, and you are. So I just want, at the time the building commissioner, building permit is submitted, the building commissioner should look at that to confirm the height.
Okay, I just have one question, Ally. In the items that you discussed, do any of those require an additional condition on the proposed vote that was sent out to us in the package?
So just the one is, the one that I think is most important, is that the two properties be merged together, and then also that all of the parking is updated to reflect what has been stated here tonight, which I assume is what has been put on this most recent plan that's submitted.
Okay, so there should be additional conditions on your proposed... Oh, okay.
It's a slight revision to number two, Joe.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, thank you.
I do have the plan showing the additional four parking spaces.
Oh, you do, okay, great. Yeah.
Where's the two that you're talking about? This number two? Yeah, your point, yeah, your point that it's, that there's eight, and it's...
Okay, I do have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Did we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. With the public hearing closed, I would like to call for a motion on the proposed findings.
Move to adopt the following proposed findings. One, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Two, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Three, the use is consistent with the zoning code, and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Four, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use and structures. Five, landscaping will be adequate, and in compliance with, we have a plan here.
The landscaping plan?
The landscaping plan, thank you.
Second.
We're not done yet.
Oh, sorry. Oh, you have that on.
And all signage will meet the Town of Howard sign regulations.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, the motion on the findings carries. I'd like to now call for a motion on the site plan review special permit.
Move to approve the site plan special permit with conditions for the proposed redevelopment of property at 715 and 731 Route 28, based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard with the above findings. The following conditions are imposed. One, 715 and 731 Route 28 will be merged together prior to receiving a building permit. Two, all lighting shall be required to meet outdoor lighting regulations, Article 21 of the code. Three, all signage will be required to meet sign regulations, Article 7 of the code. So we did that twice. And finally, any changes to the site plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I would like to now call for a motion with regard to the use special permit for 20 or more parking spaces.
To approve the use, move to approve the use special permit pursuant to paragraph 325-51 of the Howard zoning code, code, based on the above findings.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, the motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I now like to turn the meeting back to Chairman Larry Brophy. Thank you very much, everybody.
Looks like.
I guess I did. Okay. The next most difficult item is minutes of July, of June 27, 2017.
Move to adopt the planning board minutes of June 27, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of June 17, 17. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And as I mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, we're in the process of straightening out the appointment terms and members of the planning board for now, so we will hold on the elections for two weeks. Do I need, do I need a motion for that? Tabled?
I don't think so, just tabled it.
Okay, all but...
Give you what you want it.
Yeah, if you want to.
No. Let's see, all business.
Okay.
There was one, there was one memo, one note we got from Peter DeBaca.
Mm-hmm.
Peter had questions on three areas in town. Could you just summarize that?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. It was three areas in town that he had a concern regarding violations of them, and so I have to do some more review on it. I softened it last week, so I just got back yesterday. Well, one of them was about the, an approval that the planning board granted regarding outdoor storage for retail use, and so I just need to look into more violations like that.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is if Mr. DeBaca did make some comments about something like that, that we ask him to be present at a meeting to discuss this.
Rather than second-guess him?
As opposed to, tried to make Ally figure out what Peter... As opposed to trying to make Ally figure out what Peter was trying to...
Thinking.
Exactly, yes. And one other point that I, that I have completely separate, on a completely separate issue. I think we've all gotten the email from Ally about the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. And the 21st of August is fine with me. While everybody else is here, we may want to see if it's fine with everybody else who is at least present here.
It's great, yeah.
August 21st.
August 21st.
August 21st?
Which is a Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, I think most of you actually responded to me, so thank you. I appreciate it.
I did. That's why I'm responding tonight, Ally.
Thank you.
The one thing that I would suggest for consideration by both Ally and the board is that, maybe not tonight, but at a meeting prior to that, we discuss whether or not we want to do any type of presentation to the Board of Selectmen with regard to the priorities that we have been discussing.
On August 21st?
On August 21st. And what I would suggest is that we have either Ally or Larry give a presentation that basically outlines what we have been discussing and what we see as the Planning Board priorities for the coming year, or some of them, I think, go more than one year. And that basically, we sort of tried to frame the discussion by asking the Board of Selectmen whether they are in agreement with those priorities or whether they have priorities that differ, or, you know, in addition, which priorities do they feel that they would like to be directly involved in?
Yes, I mean, yeah, it's nice to be on the right road, but if you know where you're going, it's much, much more helpful to be on that road.
That's true.
I agree, and probably at the next, at the next meeting, you could put that on the agenda.
Sure.
That would be lovely. And briefings and reports by board members. I will just quickly summarize that. There, the Planning Board appointments over the last couple of years have been probably not tracked as well as they could by the town, and as a result, some of the terms overlapping, and some of the members weren't appointed correctly. But hopefully, we'll get that straightened out within the next two weeks, and I think we can straighten that out with little or no difficulty and little or no turmoil. That being said...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson that we adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.